We call to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for March 11th, 2024. Good to see each and every one of you here this evening. We'll now ask that everyone please stand for our prayer and our pledge of allegiance. Most gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this day that you've given us, for the beautiful sunshine we've enjoyed, for the changes in what we're seeing as far as we head towards spring. Father, we're so thankful for this county. We're thankful for what it means to us and what it is for this, the citizens, and what we have here. Father, we ask that you give us the ability to make the decisions that we should make, the proper decisions that we should make. Father, we're so thankful for all the many things that we do have, but may we always remember what we have comes from you. Watch over and protect us. We offer this prayer in your son's holy name. Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Madam Secretary, I ask for a roll call for a determination of form.
Jim Everwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Present.
Mike Kush?
Present.
Lee Bogel?
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch?
Here.
David Jones?
Here.
Chip Pinion?
Marvin Whitworth?
Jim Thompson?
Here.
Pettis Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum. We move on now onto item four, which is approval of our minutes. We do have minutes from February 12th and 26th. Vice Chairman, Lee Bogel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed the minutes of the February 12th meeting, the February 26th meeting, and the February 26th planned development work session, and all found to be in good order, therefore make a motion to approve.
Motion approved. We'll have a second.
Thank you.
Second, Commissioner Jim Everwater, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, our minutes have been approved. Public comment period, have we received anything?
No, sir.
We have not received anything, so we move on to item six. Items withdrawn or deferred.
Nothing has been withdrawn nor deferred.
Right, move into our new business. Item A, rezoning and zoning ordinances, amendments request. All rezoning, zoning ordinance amendment requests will be considered at the April 11th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting unless deferred or withdrawn by the planning commission or the applicant. Item one is through Andrew Vehinger for Precipia Capital LLC, REZ 24008. Location is Butler Drive. Commissioner is Alan McAdoo in District 18. Size of the site is approximately seven acres. Tax map 125, parcel 1402, and tax map 126. Existing zoning is residential, medium density, RM. Proposed zonings is the Employment and Activity Center. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. The applicant's proposing to rezone this property to Employment and Activity Center, or EAC. The applicant had adjacent property to the north zone, the same, EAC, back in February of this year. The applicant stated they would have had all the property on their first rezoning application, but they were working with multiple heirs on the properties before you tonight, so it kind of held up things on that end. The applicant plans to combine these tracts into one larger property for potential development. There is a concept plan that has been included with your agenda packets. You'll see that the plans, at least, of course, you know it's not a binding plan, but at least gives you an idea of the direction you'd like to go. It looks like about a building, about 137,000 square feet, to be used for a cross-stalk logistics facility. They would have entrances onto existing Butler Drive with an additional access point along the realigned Butler Drive, which you can see on the concept plan there to the, I guess it'd be the left, Mike's highlighting that right there. During our pre-application meeting, similar to the last request that they made, this area is not identified as an employment area in our comprehensive plan, however, it shares a lot of the same characteristics as the other ones that are identified on the plan, namely, the ones at Ips Mill Road and I-24, and then there's two, one at Almaville Road and I-40, and then one at 452 and I-40. Actually, no, that's a, excuse me, that's not correct. Jefferson Pike and I-40, the other one's a special area. It's a different classification, but similar at the same time. So although this isn't identified specifically as that, we did feel that the characteristics did meet the same kind of zoning criteria, so again, there's nothing in the ordinance that would prohibit them from using that zoning classification here, considering its proximity to the interchange and the type of businesses we're seeing in this area, we thought it was an appropriate request, again, similar to the last request that they had made. Go back to the concept plan again. I mentioned the access along Butler Drive, and Mike, you can leave that other one back up there. That segued well pretty well on what I was going to say. The plan shows that the parking lot's going to be about 72 parking spaces with a few more trailer parking spaces, 116. Of course, we would need to see an engineered site plan, but you can see on the plan that Mike has up right now, the plans for the realigned Butler Drive. Now, that's going to realign at that intersection right there, I believe that'll be signaled there at Joby Jackson. So there's a lot of improvements coming for that. So whatever plans that do come out of this, they'll have to incorporate access to the new Butler Drive as well as the old Butler Drive into their plans, which I'm sure they will do. Buffering in the EAC is determined by the type of use proposed, so industrial uses would be required to provide a type three buffer adjacent to residentially zoned property. Commercials would be a type two. Most of the surrounding property here is used for industrial, or at least zoned for industrial purposes, so buffering would be minimal. Again, a concept, excuse me, an engineered site plan would also have to be brought to our office for our view, which would show the landscaping and the buffering, and our performance standards would also apply. This area has been transitioning to non-residential uses over the last several years, not just in the county, but also in the city of Murfreesboro. You can see the property, and Mike's bringing that up, the Murfreesboro zoning in that area. You can see to the south of the subject property, it's actually property that was recently purchased by the city of Murfreesboro for a new transfer station and possibly recycling, waste away type facility, but you can see it's zoned heavy industrial. There's general industrial, which is a little different than, we don't have anything real comparable to that. And then you see county light industrial around it in that existing EAC. So this really is consistent with what we've seen up and down this area. Even if you go up Butler Drive, you start seeing more industrial uses in the city of Murfreesboro. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time. Mike, did you have something you might want to say?
No, I was just going to note that the labels with the blue and white are in the county, like our street signs, and the labels with the green and white are within the city for reference, like their street signs, the way I remember.
Messrs., any questions for staff? Mr. Kush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Doug and Mike, the old Butler Drive access will not be as shown. It will be on the new Butler Drive improvement, right? Will the detention?
Well, I was just going to say, they're showing access off of both, because of course it'll be, depending on the timing of all this, they may have their plans finished before the road is ready for
Okay.
for actual use, but
Okay. So they're not waiting on the new Butler Drive to be finished before they start?
No, no, sir, no, sir. They, and the old Butler Drive will be converted to a right-in, right-out only.
Okay, all right. So the detention pond will stay as is, as drawn?
Most likely, yes, sir. The river is, you can see kind of the middle fork of the river is kind of to the west of the new Butler Drive location, so everything's pitched that way, to head that way, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Well, there is some shown up front, but yeah, they, it will all be worked out with the site plan.
Mr. Everwater?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that this alignment of the future Butler Drive may not be completely accurate, but this does not show that they have frontage there, and I'm assuming that Butler Drive will be cut off and they won't have access out of there except to go north towards Murfreesboro and Church Street if they don't have, out of that back gate, they would have to go north if they didn't have access here. Do you know if arrangements have been made to just, has arrangements been made for them to have easement or some sort of access to the new Butler Drive?
I'm not aware of that, but the old Butler Drive will still be in place. It will, they'll restrict, and I'll kind of move in, show you a little bit more detail. They're going to put a median in the middle of Joby Jackson and only allow right in and right out of there. They don't want people going, I guess, east on Joby Jackson and turning to go north. So there will be no left turn lanes from Joby Jackson, just rights in, rights out. So that will still be in place, and let's see, I believe they are discussing with the adjacent property owners, so this one, I think they did, the applicant probably can speak to this better than I could, but I believe they are, you know, there'll be remnant properties that they can purchase to provide access to the new Butler Drive.
Commissioners, any other questions? If not, we'll ask that the applicant or their representative come forward at this time. Good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, Rob Mulchen, SEC. This is more or less, as Doug pointed out, we kind of came to you guys about two months ago with the original larger tract to the north, with the understanding that we would probably be coming back at some point in time once we got the negotiations with the property owners worked out. We're at that point here today to ask the same zoning on those properties to the south to make this into one larger conglomeration of a property in that side to more or less kind of based on the concept plan, look at it from the standpoint of the larger warehouse than what was on the previous concept, because we didn't have the full property at that point in time. To Mr. Everwater's question, yes, I think we've been in the process of negotiation, either purchase or easements, to allow us to have connections back to the new Butler Drive access on that side. So once that roadway is installed, we would have access out to that western side of the property to give us access to the newer, fuller design for the traffic, for the trucks to go out and utilize those new intersections at Joby Jackson in the correct manner. And then, of course, in the short term, if we're up and running before that improvement's made, we'll still be using the old Butler Drive before the interchange, or the interchange that Mike was just pointing out in regards to the right in, right out, becomes effective at that point in time. So that way, we're actually utilizing the larger, newer road for those larger vehicles to use that better surface than the existing Butler Drive.
And it will have the traffic signal at that
Yes, yes.
new intersection to allow traffic to go back to 24.
Mm-hmm.
And you'll have, just for reference, a new Buc-Ee's across the street. Got to see it at the bottom of the page.
There's any other questions, I'm here now or after any more discussion.
Other questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll now move into our public hearing, and I'll call the public hearing to order. If anyone would like to come forward and have any kind of comments, either for or against, this is not a question or answer period, but for you to give your opinion on what the property is. You'll have three minutes, and at that time of your, of your three minutes, I'll either ask you to discontinue your time, or you'll be finished by that time. So anyone who'd like to come forward at this time? I don't see anyone coming forward this time, so the public hearing is discontinued to now. Commissioners, it's open for any further questions, or discussion, or a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve with staff comments. Commissioner Everwater, second, Commissioner Jones. Further discussion?
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Lee Bogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
David Jones?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion has carried. We'll move now to item two. Jeffrey D. Turner, REZ 24009, location 5845 Franklin Road. The commissioner for District 19, Romell McMurray. Size of sites, approximately one acre. Tax map 100C, Group A, parcel 28. Existing zoning is residential, medium density. Proposed zoning is office professional. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. As you stated, the applicant's proposing to zone this property to office professional. Development plans for this property include interior renovations to the existing house on the property, it's about 2,600 square feet, to make it more functional for professional office space. The applicant actually owns the property directly next door at 5871. You'll see that that's also zoned office professional. He had that zoned that way back in 2022. He's also rezoned a couple other homes further to the east along Franklin Road, which both serve as business offices. The applicant did provide a letter that we did attach with your agenda packets. He doesn't have a specific tenant at this time, but expects something like the other properties he's rezoned along Franklin Road, be it this one immediately next door or the couple that are a little closer to the city limits. He does provide a concept plan that has also been included in your packets. This concept plan does show access along Franklin Road. They show also a parking lot that will consist of about 10 regular parking spaces and one handicap parking spot. Of course, and he knows this, an engineered site plan would have to be submitted to our office before any kind of site improvements would be made to the property, and he's done that with his other properties as well. Property zoned office professional are required to provide a type one buffer adjacent to residentially zoned property. Since the property to the west is zoned office professional, no buffering is required on that side, but they would require buffering on the eastern and southern property lines. Again, a site plan would show that that meets the, shows adherence to our landscape regs at that time, and of course, our performance standards would also apply to this. The applicant does, again, he owns nine other properties along Franklin Road, has done the same to three other properties, this would be number four. One of these, again, is adjacent to the existing property, or the property day that we're looking at. We do feel that this request is consistent with the recommendations of our plan, and we do recommend approval. The applicant is present, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Messrs., any questions for staff?
Chairman, Doug, is this Jeffrey Turner, did he develop those other three pieces of properties as the exact same person?
Yes, sir.
All of the requirements that we placed on those pieces of property, have they been met?
Yes, sir. He's done a good job on those.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners, for staff?
I have what I hope is a quick question here. Are properties that are being converted from residential to office required to have any sort of detention ponds or anything? I noticed we have an addition of asphalt here.
Yes, each site is required to have its own stormwater management area, and it's hard to see, but there is a slight, this is one of his other properties right here, there is a slight little stormwater management area back in this area, and the water runs from his existing site at 5871 towards 5845, the one he's proposing. So he'll need to do something down here, it'll be, to offset this additional asphalt. He'll do the same thing here that he did in this location, and this is right before he finished the entrance, he had to get his T-DOT permit, and it takes a little bit longer to get that, so he'll put a full commercial entrance here, well, there is one now, but there, they will do the same thing here, along with the parking.
There will be a site plan
Yes, sir, you will see another site plan for this.
Any other questions? Not, we'll ask that the applicant come forward. Good evening, Mr. Turner.
Good evening, Jeff Turner. I'm a little new at this all the time, so we've had good success with the property next door. It's turned out really nice, enhanced the building. We have All-American Pest Control in there. They use it really for interviewing and training office about once a month, low traffic through there, so we're hoping to get another professional service or some type of professional office in this house.
Questions for Mr. Turner? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I believe you answered it all for him.
All right, thank you.
We will now go into the public hearing. Same rules I've mentioned before. Anyone who'd like to come forward, either for or against this development, can come forward at this time. I believe we have the same rush of the crowd that had at the last one, so I'm closing public hearing. Commissioners, either further discussion or a for or against. Mr. Kush?
Mr. Chair, Mike, I have a question. I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, but I got to ask it anyway. Since this particular applicant owns all, I assume he owns all three of those properties in a row right there that you just had up, right?
I believe, well, at least he owns these two. I'm not sure about the third.
Well, let's say, let's say the two. Let's say he's got the one proposed tonight, and then the one next door. Can he come, from a stormwater management issue, could he combine, like if he needed a pond in this corner and a pond in that corner, could he combine the two corners to make one pond, or
He could.
the fact that the properties are separate legally?
Well, he would need some kind of agreement that oversees both properties to make sure that both properties benefit from a stormwater management pond, that the one owner of, on the lower end couldn't remove the pond at a later date, so we'd need some kind of assurance for that.
Oh, he could.
He could, yes, sir.
Yeah, two properties could share the same
Right.
Okay.
And remembering earlier, this has got great soil, Cumberland, Harpeth, Lowman soil, so I think what we did, we did a bio-retention area to help that water soak in in this area here, so you can see this whole area's just covered up with good soil, Cumberland, Lowman, Harpeth, some of the best in the county. But yes, he could do one, one regional pond, as long as we have something to oversee it.
Okay, thank you, Michael. I would, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Kush makes the motion to approve. Commissioner Thompson, seconds. Further discussion? Not, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Jim Everwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Lee Bogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
David Jones?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion has carried. We'll move on now to item three. Stan Bennett for Redeemer Classical Academy, REZ 24010. Location is Veterans Parkway. Commissioner is District 19, Romell McMurray. Size of sites, approximately 49 acres. Tax map 115, parcel 10. Existing zoning is residential, medium density, RM. Proposed zoning is institutional. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. As you stated, the applicant is looking to zone this property to institutional. They've been operating in a temporary location at the Fellowship Bible Church, excuse me, on Veterans Parkway, just to the north of the subject site. They'd like to build their new permanent school location at this particular location. Current enrollment's about 65 to 70 students. Future enrollment is projected to be upwards of about 120 students within the next five to 10 years or so. Full buildout is expected to be about 300 students, which could be in about 15 years. The applicant indicates also that they would like to eventually construct a preschool on the property. To that end, we did include a concept plan in your agenda packets that was provided by the applicant. You'll see that development plans include an initial phase of three buildings, about 13,200 square feet of the buildings themselves, on about six and a half acres of land. Other improvements would include a paved driveway, parking area, playground, et cetera. The plan also shows locations of future buildings. You can kind of see on the concept plan, Mike's kind of got the arrow over, yeah, that's the first phase right there, and then there's a proposed daycare again, which will come at some point in the future, and that would be like a larger campus at some point in the future as they continue to, as they continue to grow. The institutional zone was created for schools, larger community assembly type uses, and other similar uses. What I like about the institutional zone, and this was deliberate, when we created it, we actually created it with a limited range of uses, so you're not going to see anything like retail type uses or anything like that here. We've strictly created the zone for specifically these kind of uses that you see being proposed today. The concept plan does show access to Veterans Parkway. They are showing a left turn lane being created, as well as showing storage and taper areas. There'll also be a parking lot with approximately 200 spaces that would serve the first phase of the school, although they may not need all that many. We met with the applicant not too long ago and discussed that with them, so that, you know, if they don't need all that parking right now, there'd be no reason to actually construct it all, they could just show it as being phased in over time. Should this application be approved, compliance with access and parking requirements would have to meet our requirements in the zoning ordinance, of course, but Veterans Parkway, although it's in the county, it is maintained by the city of Murfreesboro due to the Southwest Loop Agreement, so they will also need to work with the city of Murfreesboro on their access plans to make sure that they're in conformance with the city of Murfreesboro requirements. Property zoned institutional are required to install a type one buffer adjacent to residentially zoned property. Existing plantings can be used to satisfy that. Something else that, there's a lot of existing plantings out here that they can use. You can see a lot of the properties actually impacted by the flood plain and the floodway, so obviously you're not going to be impacting any of that area. What's unique about this, especially considering that it's across Veterans Parkway, is their septic area, this is actually part of the subject property and is part of the zoning request on the opposite side of Veterans Parkway, but their septic area is actually on the opposite side, so they will have to work with Murfreesboro City as far as boring under the, under Veterans Parkway for the, I believe the water's over there too, so for the water and also for the septic as well, so that's something to keep in mind. And of course, like I said before, with all commercial, non-residential rezonings, I should say, our performance standards will apply. Again, Redeemer Classical Academy has been operating in a temporary location at the Fellowship Bible Church on Veterans Parkway. This new location will allow them to expand their facilities to serve more students. Most of the area that surrounds this school is actually either agricultural or just undeveloped, so impact to surrounding residential area should be minimal, and we do feel that this request is consistent with the plan, our comprehensive plan, and we do recommend approval. I know the applicant is present, so we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Messrs., questions for staff? If they are done, we'll ask that the applicant come forward at this time.
Rob Mulchen, 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. Stan Bennett with the academy. We're pleased to come forth with this request for the institutional use in the property for Redeemer to look for a permanent home. As is stated, they are working currently out of a portable next to the church up the road. This will allow them to, one, get the initial phase that you see lined out on the drawing as their starting point, and eventually, potentially add a daycare, and then eventually, as time goes and they get closer to that goal of 300 students, to put the permanent facility at the back of the property, as you saw on the diagram. So this is more or less the beginning, hopefully, for them in regards to growing their organization and their church, and we look forward to the opportunities to serve in this community, so I'm available for any questions if you have any.
It appears SS on the back of that lot is sanitary sewer. Do you have intentions to attach to the sewer or use the soil?
No, we're going straight onto the road to the, we've actually mapped the soils on the other side of Veterans over there, so we'll be going underneath and utilizing those soils on the other side of the road, so actually no sewer on the site.
And you will see this again with the site plan review, so they'll have to do a full site plan.
Thank you all.
Well, now, go to public hearing. Anyone who'd like to come forward with either comments for or against, we'll ask you to come forward at this time. Have no one coming forward, so we close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or either for or against?
Just one, I should ask it before. Mike, I believe I saw some acceleration or slow down lanes or turning lanes proposed for Veterans Parkway, is that correct?
Well, yes, sir. They'll do a deceleration left turn lane into the site, so that right now there's a, I guess, a center median. I'm going to show you. Bear with me, it's been acting funny this evening.
I know, we get another shot at it. I just wanted to make sure that it was in those plumb preliminary drawings. I thought I saw one up there.
Yes, sir. They are putting in a turn lane. There's this center island, no, it's a, I guess, a four-lane divided highway, but they will put the turn, the decel and a left turn lane into the site. I'll show you on the plan.
Give me, and I might have missed it, but I didn't catch it, the size of the building, the number of occupants.
Yes, sir. Well, as of right now, they've got about 65 to 70 students. Their first phase that they're looking at, it's probably going to be around, including the multiple buildings, if you added all those together, it'd be about 13,000 square feet or so. So that's enough for them currently, but we expect expansion as time goes on.
And with the expansion, the property still large enough to handle the numbers?
It should be. Now, of course, obviously, if they are growing to the point, they'll have to make sure their septic system can keep up with that, but I know they've done a lot of their due diligence before making this application, so I'm guessing that that was part of what they were asking about, as far as, would this be enough septic capacity for a full buildout?
I see staff recommends approval?
Yes, sir.
And with that recommendation, I move to approve of staff comments.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Jim Everwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Lee Vogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
David Jones?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It is approved. Staff reports and other business?
Just as a follow-up, their current site, you said, is at Fellowship Bible Church. This is the modular building that they will be moving to the site, so they've already got the buildings lined up to move to the site, and this is the main building that you'll see in the middle of the property. Sorry. Just a little extra information.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioners, I just want to bring to your attention, I was on the phone this afternoon with County Commissioner Craig Harris. This weekend, his father had a very severe heart attack this past weekend, and this morning, he had just come home from West Tennessee from being down there with his father, got a notification that his father had taken a turn for the worst. So he was hit it back, and I'd just like for y'all to keep him in your prayers, and that family in your prayers, and it just wasn't looking all that good for his father, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. All right, I don't know of anything else that needs to come before this group. Mr. Phillips?
Quick follow-up, our study session, our work session that we had a couple of weeks ago, the recommendations that came out of that will be presented at our nine o'clock meeting.
Yes, sir. We'll put a staff report on there. We want to report back with some more specific recommendations at that time.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.